Okay, it is seven o'clock and I call the September sixth, 2022 regular meeting of the Franklin County Planning Commission to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss the meeting format.
Thank you Chair. Tonight's meeting will be conducted through a hybrid in-person, online meeting platform. Should an individual planning commissioner become unexpectedly disconnected, please rejoin the meeting at your first opportunity. The record will reflect your attendance. The meeting will be paused for up to ten minutes to address technical difficulties. If they cannot be resolved within ten minutes, then the minute meeting will proceed so long as a quorum of planning commissioners are present. We do have one planning commissioner attending via phone, Ms. Didier. Now, this is to the public. If you wish to comment or need clarification on a public hearing item, please send us an email at planninginquiry, all one word, at franklincountywa.gov before the public comment period closes. Once public comment period has closed on said item, comments will not be included as part of a discussion. To those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone when addressing staff for public comments, testimony.
Will planning staff please call roll and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Crowless?
Here.
Mike Vincent?
Here.
Layden Lowe?
Here.
Melinda Didier? Peter Harpster? Manny Gutierrez?
Here.
Stacy Neiften?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
Derek Broughton, I'm the Director of Planning and Building for Franklin County.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One.
Aaron Guderson, Planner One.
And we also have Jen Johnson via phone should we need to speak with the civil deputy attorney or anything.
Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Lowe, it has been moved by Commissioner Lowe and seconded by Commissioner Neiften, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July nineteenth, 2022, and August second, 2022 meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July nineteenth, 2022, and August second, 2022 meetings.
All seconded.
It has been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Gutierrez. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host, who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
Oh, you don't have a mic. Okay. All right, here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid hearing. In-person public testimony will be divided in two groups, for or against slash neutral. They will be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, giving their name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Call-in public testimony will be called upon individually during the call-in public testimony portion of the hearing, giving their name for the audio record, as well as if they are in favor, neutral, or against the proposal. For those calling in, please mute audio when not speaking. Emailed comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the call-in public testimony section of the hearing. All comments and questions shall be addressed to the planning commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of a personal nature. Each speaker shall be have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited, as every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on the subject matter of these hearings, except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a discussion in which there has been an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matter which we which are before us for hearing today. Whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interest in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with opponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have had whether we have business associates or immediate family who may either benefit or be harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were no declarations. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on this agenda? Let the record show there were no objections. The order of the hearing will be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report. The commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representative's presentation. In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Call-in public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Final staff comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Item one is public hearing for file CUP 2022-06, SEPA 2022-20, is a proposal to allow for contractor storage, which is allowed in the rural residential R1 zoning district through conditional use permit approval, FC 1714040. I declare the public hearing for CUP 2022-6, SEPA 2022-20 to be open at 7:08. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Clarification of the record, it states here is to allow for contractor storage, but there will also be contractor operations, potential fabrication at the site, just as a clarification for the record. Thank you Chair. As mentioned, this is a conditional use for a contractor storage and light fabrication yard. I guess it's not a yard, well, we'll get into that. The address is 4120 Melody Lane, Pasco, Washington, 99301, parcel number 114301117. Zoning is rural residential, RR1. Comp plan is also rural residential. The property size is approximately 1.32 acres. It's located at the east of Road 42 North, south of Melody Lane, and west of South 36 North, Road, sorry, west of Road 36 North. The request is to operate a material storage fence business, and then, like I said, there's also light manufacturing or fabrication of gates. Area to be used is a 912 square foot shop and back of the procs, okay, 912 square foot shop and the back of the property, a portion of approximately 7,725 square foot for the open storage. There's an existing residential home and a pole building. This is a aerial of the property. And so, there's Melody, this is Road 42. That's the house, and then outbuildings, and then that's kind of where there's, so, and then there's a picket fence running the property. Can't remember if there's one out front, but it runs down that. Here's site pictures. That's the land use notice sign. So these pictures were picked taken when we put up that sign. The owner about July 28th, staff sent notices to technical agencies, property owners within 500 feet, Franklin County Graphic, and registered the SEPA on the SEPA registry as number 202 203 725. And then we also posted the, now, we posted the land use action sign a couple weeks later. That signage had to be up within two weeks of this hearing, so, but it was done on August 15th. More, so, we received three public comments from three households submitted, that were submitted, that were in opposition to the project as of August 24th, 2022. There are also the dismissal of a petition from the neighbors opposed to the project. All of these are included in your packet. Comments touched on multiple points of concern with traffic noise, fire hazard, litter, and diminished land values. Comments in the petition, as mentioned, are in the staff report. Planning and Building received a code complaint regarding the property being used to store commercial business vehicles and fencing materials. Staff conducted a site visit and concurred that a fencing business did appear to be operating on the property, including open storage of construction materials and vehicles. A code enforcement letter was sent to the landowner requiring commercial activity on the property to stop, and the openly stored materials be removed or stored in a building unless a conditional use permit was obtained. Mr. Lopez applied for a conditional use permit. Key component of the business is contractor storage, which is a listed conditional use within the RR1 zoning district. And a listed use is basically one that's been adopted by code as being potentially made able to be compatible. It means that it went through the notice process and it's included, it's actually physically listed as conditional use under the actual zoning designation. As opposed to unclassified uses, which is another list of uses, or one where you have like a new idea or a concept that's never been before, all of those can be conditional uses, but this one is actually listed in the zone as a potential compatible, can potentially be made, and it's the contractor storage yard, is what we're basically kind of looking at this primary facility as, with the facilit, or the fabrication as a secondary or ancillary So some examples that can make conditional use, commercial activity compatible surrounding residential, limiting hours of operation, requiring the insertion of side obscuring, side obscuring fencing, limiting the height of stored materials, maintaining fire access lanes through stored materials, that allows, you know, so you don't end up with a big giant fat fire hazard. If a conditional use is approved, it may be rescinded following a public hearing. If the county receives material complaints, the owner is not abiding by or meeting any of the required conditions. Franklin County Public Works comments are that an approach permit will be required to access county roads. This would be primarily for the need to double check that the, where the vehicles and stuff are accessing on the county roads, that that access has been built to basically accommodate that type of use. Any utility extension crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at the time of application. That's pretty standard. There's nothing required if you're not cutting into county roads. The RR1 zoning district is in accordance with the goals and policy. It's a listed conditional use, therefore can be deemed to be made compatible, providing certain conditions or reasonable conditions are met. The proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure. It will be constructed, maintained, and operated to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Location and height of the structure and site design will not discourage the development of permanent permitted uses on property in general vicinity or impair the value thereof. Operation in connection with the proposal will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fume, vibration, dust, traffic, or flashing lights than would be the operation of any permitted uses within the district. And the proposal will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. Now, this is primarily a residential area, and the reason why staff believes that this can be made compatible is based on the requirements of certain proposed or recommended conditions. As it sits, obviously, it does disturb neighbors because we've got a code complaint. However, staff does believe that if certain mitigations are implemented, it can be made compatible such that it wouldn't necessarily interrupt the, can't say interrupt, because everybody can make noise depending on what's going on, but the point is it can be made to where both the residential and the property owner's needs or wants are balanced. So, in addition to our standard conditional use permit language, the applicant will be required to apply for a home occupation permit and comply with the standards set forth in FCC 17.68. Shall comply with noise standards established in WAC 17360, a minimum six-foot-tall side obscuring fence, wall, or other sort of side obscuring structure. Constructed out of wood PVC or block material, and shall cover both the side and rear yard area as defined in FCC 1706. Is it 1,000?
Yeah.
Our code doesn't normally go over 1,000, so that's odd. Fence shall not encroach within 30, within the 30-foot access and utility easement as contained in short plat 2003-18, and as designated as auditor file number 512228. That might be assessors, I can never remember what that A stands for. The construction materials stored inside should not be stacked more than four foot in height and shall not exceed the footprint for outdoor material storage designated in the CUP's approved site plan. All parts of material stored shall be accessible via 10-foot wide minimum access route. So in other words, it needs to be very, it needs to be organized, it needs to be stacked, maintained at all time, and the ability to move through that storage area must be maintained at all time. That's a fire and safety requirement. If there's a fire or an incident, firefighters need to be able to access all points of the property, so those lanes, lane, you know, maybe only requires one lane, but anytime that you've got these stacks, they've got to be, all points of the property need to be accessible. Gate fabrication activity shall be entirely conducted within confines of the existing shop. The existing shop shall be inspected to ensure it meets the requirements for a commercial structure prior to use in the building for commercial fabrication. This includes meeting fire and safety requirements, as well as sanitary and ADA compliance as required by, but not necessarily limited to, the Benton Franklin Health District and International Building Code, and then also the American Disability Act, which is the ADA compliance requirements. Hours of business operations shall be 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, as stated in the application. Any business-related deliveries, pickups, shall occur during business hours and shall not occur before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. or on weekends. Exterior lighting shall be directed on-site so as not to interfere with comfort and repose of adjoining property owners. If security or other outdoor lighting is installed, it shall be directed down, and no part of the illumination halo shall encroach onto a neighboring property. The site shall be maintained at all times so as not the land become a fire hazard or accumulate with debris, weeds, and/or garbage. Additionally, the risk of future dust shall be mitigated through appropriate means on, at the site. So that basically means anywhere where, you know, you've got dirt, it needs to be either wet, or it needs to be covered in vegetation of some sort, grass or something to keep that dust down, gravel, whatever, just as long, you know, that heavier vehicle can kick up more dust, moving things around can, we get winds, and we want to make sure that that's minimized. And then they'll need to comply with comments provided by Franklin County Public Works. And then the recommended, staff suggested motion is as follows.
Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? Does the applicant or applicant's representative?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. This is Commissioner Didier, and I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I understand from the staff report that this application is a result of a code enforcement complaint?
Correct.
Which, I understand that our, that our code enforcement is operating basically on, on complaint-driven.
Correct.
So, I just have a question on, on how, was this, was there just one code complaint prior to the filing of the conditional use permit?
So what happens, the letter said, stop what you're doing, come in, and then if you want to continue with that activity, you need to apply for a conditional use permit and receive a conditional use permit. Then the app, or the landowner submitted their application for a CUP. They came in within the deadline. It's two weeks. I don't remember exactly when they came in, but then they filed for that, so.
That wasn't really my, I think you misunderstood what my question was. My question was, were, were there multiple complaints leading up to the code enforcement?
No, there was one complaint, and that's what triggered everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Does the applicant or applicant's representative wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Villan Lopez. I reside at 4120 Melody Lane, and I just come on behalf of my business that my husband and I have appreciated, and just having the opportunity to give back to the community, and providing employment, and just serving, and, you know, providing for our family. And so, you know, we're just here to make sure we're, you know, following what needs to be followed as far as, you know, the codes, what needs to be in place. And I just appreciate you for letting me speak at this time. And, you know, we're looking forward to continue to operate out of our home. We have a family of three, and I enjoy that we're able to do that, because it doesn't take away from, you know, family time, or as my husband can just walk in the door, and, you know, you know, I feel like if it was at a different location rather than our home, you know, it just takes time from that, and, you know, being a business owner, you know, it takes a lot of time, you know, from the owners, you, the time you put in, the after-hours and whatnot. And so, I enjoy that we are able to do this from our home. And this was actually something that, you know, when we moved to the Tri-Cities, you know, we saw our property as an opportunity to just, you know, continue our business. And, you know, I, I am just, you know, appreciative and able to, you know, provide this, you know, to our children, and they're able to see that, you know, it takes a lot of work ethic and whatnot, and consistency, and, you know, just to, you know, continue to provide and whatnot. So, that's all I would like to say at this time, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Now we will do the in-person public testimony. First, we're going to do for, then against, and then neutral. Does anybody want to speak for the project?
Yeah.
You're in favor of the project?
No, sure.
Okay, so there's no in favor. Now we'll go to against. Now we'll go to against the project.
For neutral.
Who would like to speak?
Yeah, my name's Chuck Harmon and I live at sixty-seven sixteen North Road forty-two, and I've been out there fifty-four years. And the reason we moved out there because it was nice and quiet, and we didn't mind living there with you guys, but we just wanted to get away from the blacktop and the city, you know. That's the reason we moved out there, and we'd like to stay that way. And here we come today. And well, when they first came in there with that company, I met two people, and I talked and that's the only two people I met. Some of the best people you'd ever want to talk to. So it ain't about the people. It's about somebody infringing on our rights out there, the living where we brought and raised our families, and we bring our kids there. We don't need to go by someplace where there's chemicals and leaking trucks and galvanize spray cans to go with the welding on the fencing or smoke coming off of welding rod or anything like that. And for us environmental, there's environmental health there. Man, we've got a lot of bird watchers around there, and I'm one of them. And I've been that way for quite a few years. Now, there's a guy right beside me, his name's Mr. Hubbard, and he's a bird watcher. We feed them birds all the time over there. Why you get this guy, this traffic going in and out chasing them birds and this and that? Not only the birds, but other bugs and other insects around there. And a hazmat would probably like to get a drift on this, you know. But the hazmat, they're against all this stuff, though, and they're trying to fight for us about having a good environmental life and a good air and a good water. But something like this moving right in the middle of where we live with this company is wrong. And if you guys are all really true to us, if we asked each and every one of you, "Well, how would you like this in your front yard?" You know, trucks backing up to your front yard where you have your nice flowers and stuff like that, well, that's what's happening to us out there. And you guys wouldn't want it. We don't want it, you know? But there is places for companies like this to start, like the Port of Pascal. They've got places out there that'll help you money-wise. They'll move in there, give you a land, it sets you up, and probably even help you with materials. And there's a place out in Hanford to do the same thing, and they'll help these people out. They don't have to move right in our front yard and bring all this, whatever they bring in there, you know? Because you don't move them trucks and these chemicals and this and that for, you know, things happen, you know? And we don't want it to happen in our front yard. And I know you guys wouldn't want it to happen in your front yard. And I just pray to you, just vote against this, you know? That'd be the right thing to do. And I appreciate you guys. I don't care what them guys say about you guys, you're just some pretty good guys. Put a book up like this and let us look at it. Well, I thought we have really... I've had to sit up two or three nights, but see, what am I going to show them guys? Well, duh, you guys have it right here, you know? But I had it right here. But I just hope you guys see what we're talking about out there. That's where we raise our family and bring our friends and have a good time. And if we want noise, we go in town with you guys, you know? But we just move out there where it's nice and quiet. But I just hope you just kind of think about what we say today about Clark's Edition, and we don't want this. It's not the right place. And there is a right place. And I really pray that these guys, their business comes along real well and they make real big. And there's a place for it, but not out there in Clark's Edition, in our front yard. And I hope you guys realize what I'm talking about, because I know you wouldn't want in your front yard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So my name is Larry Abear. I'm building a house just right down the street, actually right behind Chuck. And when he showed me that letter, because I never got this, it's a new address. I wrote it planning, told him about it. I didn't get a letter, so I had to really hustle to try to figure out what's going on here. I do know the people that had the house before, and they did a lot of work to it, renovations and stuff like that. And you have pictures of this thing that shows it before and after. I agree with Chuck. There are places. I work out in Hanford, and, you know, we deal with a lot of waste out there. I do a lot of planning, do a lot of electrical planning for tank farms out there. There's a lot of stuff you have to look at. Looks like you guys put together a pretty good packet. I'm noticing that questionnaire, though, it's kind of questionable. I mean, we do have birds there. We have a lot of birds there. And we have a lot of animals there. You know, I'm kind of worried about the chemicals that are associated with this. I do see a flatbed truck sitting there with a big chemical tank on it. What about the runoff for the water? You know, I got high nitrate just in my well that I got to try to figure out how to get rid of. Yeah, and like Chuck said, I don't want this in the front yard. It's right where I come out the driveway, it's to the right. You know, you're talking about putting a high fence, like a... It's pretty high to kind of block it on the sides. But you have one neighbor who's directly behind him, and that's his view of looking in this yard. So I propose... I'm totally against it. There are places they could do. I think it's doing a business in a residential area, you're hiding. I mean, do the people that do audits on businesses and commercial businesses, do they ever look to or know to look into a residential area to do their audits? I think it's probably for the skies. But nothing against these people. I've never met them. And I do understand you want to do a business, and that's fine, but I think there's better places for it. That's the reason why we have zoning. I know for a fact a friend of mine opened up a business in Murchley, out of Tenter, and they were giving him, giving, buying his machines for him and all his tools. Is that it? All his stuff?
No.
For the business to help him. So there are places like that, but not in our front yard or not in our neighborhood. So I do appreciate the packet, but I'm against it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Vic Hubbard. I live at sixty-seven thirteen North Road forty-two, and I am the... I'm the guy that had to call in because it just got worse and worse out there. He was... They... As you can see in the packet, I've got photos. They've parked all their vehicles, well, not all their vehicles, they've got about five vehicles actually parked right up against the fence in front of my house. So like when I'm looking out the window, and I've got wildflowers out there, and we do actually watch the birds out there, all I see is junk. And unfortunately, I feel that, you know, I feel bad for them because they... I get that they would like to have this, you know, at home and have a business at home, and I get that. But, you know, we moved out into our area because it is a residential neighborhood, and that's what we, you know, depended upon. We didn't... I wasn't even aware you could actually, you know, well, it's all like we can go ahead and start a business or whatever. But it's just, I don't understand that that's even something that's possible in a residential area, because this... These are not like, you know, twenty acre lots or anything like that. These are, you know, most of them are one acre lots. They're like, we are... We're on five acres, but most of them are like one acre lots. They're just a little bit larger than residential. It's not too far from us. And you have my thing, so I'm not going to, you know, go through and reread everything because I believe you guys have it all. You have the photographs and stuff like that. I mean, there's open gas cans sitting out, tons of debris that gets blown around and stuff, and that's as it stands now. And if they get the go-ahead, then where's it go? So I do feel for you guys, you know? But it's, you know, going to badly hurt my value and just basically, you know, I've been living since two thousand and four out there, and it's seriously the most peaceful, beautiful place that you could live, at least if you like airplanes, because it's... We do have airplanes coming over us. But it's, you know, it's residential, and it should stay that way. And I don't think we should dilute the residential area by allowing a bunch of different exceptions to the rule. So anyway, thank you.
My name's Richard Ransum. I've been living out there for quite a while. There's a lot of things I don't like about this. We've been down here many times talking how we don't want no businesses out of here, out there. I don't know how many times we filled this room. Two or three different times we've come in here and told them we didn't want no business. You know, we just... Our quiet area, we just... We're just living out there. It's nice and quiet. I unfortunately live on a dirt road. It's only a dirt road out there. It's like one block long, and that's the most reded road, dirt road, dust road. I have like quarter inch of dust if I don't drive my truck very often. It's going into my yard everywhere, and I just don't think that's the right thing to do. It's just way too much traffic. Their rigs go by, bam, 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 and things will bounce out, not out of it, but up and down. And if you've heard metal bounce on metal, it's very loud. It's just constant. They drive back and forth all day long. They got quite a few people live there, work with them, I mean, work at the place. And when they unload it, bang, 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 pipe hitting together all day long when they're unloading, it could be four hours, just any time. And when I came here, I thought we were coming here about one storage place. And I am really shocked that you guys want to put a business in there. You want to okay them to run their business in there. To me, it's not right. It's just not right for people that live out there. And I understand it's RR1, whatever, and you can do basically what you want, but I don't think it's the right thing to do to us out there. We've been out there for a long time, and it's really a nice place to live. And with this added noise and the trucks back and forth, I just... It floors me. And I see you guys put a road deal to see how much traffic drives up and down forty-two. But the problem is that there's a Roberta there that goes to the city, so most of them is cut in that way, so they're not going over your little counters. So I just... I'm... I was really confused. I'm glad I came down because I did not know that you guys were climbing on turning this into a business, giving them a license to run their business out of their home. That hasn't been in the past. We don't have that out there. Well, I'm sure we have them, but they're illegal ones. And I just... I don't even know if the guy has a business license. Maybe he does, maybe he don't. I don't know if it's through the Franklin County or not. I don't know. I don't see that. I don't see it in any of the paperwork. I don't see that they're being regulated by the state, a state license to do this. I just... So I don't know. Sometimes I think people get the horse behind the cart, and I think this is one of them cases. I don't think it's been well looked at. I just think that someone's trying to get more businesses in the county. I understand that, but not in a residential area. I just... It floors me. So of course, I'm not for it, but I just don't think it's a place for businesses. We've been through this, I don't know how many times, and I don't know how many times we're going to have to come down and do this again and again and again. But I don't know about you guys. I don't have time to do this all the time, but I will be here every time you guys try to do this, and I just don't think it's right. I think it's passed out, not passed.
If I could clarify a couple things?
I'd love to.
Yeah. First of all, we don't let or control anything. What happens is staff looks at the code. The code lists this as an allowed conditional use in the area. So what we do is that means that it's been vetted, so that's what our recommendation is based on. As it says today, nope, not compatible. But if additional conditions are, as we kind of outlined, are implemented, so this is where our recommendation comes from. Remember, this staff, as well as this body, is a recommending body. We don't allow or disallow anything that's not within our power. That's the board. So the board adopted a code. That's the code the staff is following when it makes its recommendation. If it's listed as conditional use, it means that the board, in the past, determined that this type of use in this area could be made compatible if the conditions are in place. Staff develops recommended conditions that we believe would make this listed use potentially compatible. But it's only a recommendation. And so we make our recommendation, and we suggest findings of fact, and we suggest conditions. The planning commission then takes our recommendation, reviews that, reviews the information, listens to the comments made. They will take what staff says. They'll either adopt it, modify it, recommend denial, whatever. They make their position. That recommendation is then forwarded, along with everything else, to the board. The board makes the final decision based on the record that we're developing tonight and through the earlier comment period. So I just wanted to make you understand that the reason why things are coming from Clark's Edition is because the code allows for landowners in that area to request these types of uses. So then we go through this. We are looking at a code update. Hoping next year we'll see how things play out, but that's going to be a very active... We're going to want a lot of participation from the public at that time, just as an FYI. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're going to be going through our zoning code. Our zoning code hasn't been touched except for in bits and pieces since two thousand and eight. So we are in the process of trying to up... So some of that is also what we're experiencing as our codes were developed under one paradigm of development that we had back then. Then things changed a lot, but the codes hadn't caught up, and we're going to be trying to get them matched up, listen to the neighbors, talk to folks in those areas to make sure that when we are developing these conditional use lists, that they are with the character and what's desired in the community. But I just wanted to...
By the time you do that, what you're talking about, these are going to be businesses that are already locked in, and you're not going to move them out. They're going to be grandfathered in if you change it.
If one is approved, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just explaining...
So up until we get to that point, it's... What we are wanting is to get, have it stopped, because I was at a meeting here with you, and we were talking about businesses, and you guys said, "Okay, you guys in one other outfit, a donut hole, are the only ones that have these." And at the time, you guys were going to say, "Well, let's look at just have... Quit having business out of the Clark's Edition." Now, here we are again, just one after another. And I know what you're going to say, because I... Me and you had words before about this stuff. And you come out and talk to us in the car, and it was telling us all along, you know, "I just got to do this because, you know, I'm trying to get business in the county." And that's what we... That was... I've met four people that was there when you were talking, so don't look at me like that. But anyway, I said what I wanted to say. I just don't think it's right, and I think we should go a different direction.
Now, just a little clarification also. We listen, and then we make a recommendation to the commissioners. They're the ones that will do the final, and you can go to that meeting, too. This isn't... This is not... This is not final.
You can't speak at that meeting.
You can go.
You can go, but you can't speak. Just don't go thinking they're going to allow... I don't want... It's what's known as a closed-record hearing.
Yeah, so...
Because we're setting and establishing... So everything that you've said, everything you've said, those all will be forwarded on to the planning commission, or I mean, the commissioners. They will have what your comments are and everything like that. Everything in this packet gets forwarded on the comment... If the board asks, I'll give them a recording, but I don't... They won't normally do that. But, yeah, the... Your comments will be forwarded on. Those comment... That's what we're doing tonight, is we're establishing or finalizing the record that gets forwarded on to the board. That's why we take the public testimony. It's all being recorded. So, you know, now, I don't control what the board does, you know, so... But I... All of this gets moved on to the board. So I don't want you guys to think that coming here is important, and it's important that we hear from constituents, because I'm staff. I'm here to, you know, follow the rules. We don't set policy. We just implement what's been directed to us to do so.
Can I speak to... Oh, I'm sorry. I'll have my chair. If there was...
Hi, my name is Sylvia Hubbard. I also live at six seven one three North Road forty-two. My husband, Ben, is here. I just, you know, I was reading through your suggestions, suggested conditions of approval, and the... I appreciate you looking at this undertaking as this is not within the code as it stands... as it stands today, but that it maybe could be made to be part of our neighborhood. The devil is always in the details. And what I don't see is, or what I would like to get clarification, would ask you to clarify for me, is you recommended a minimum six-foot-tall side obstructing fence. I would like to get clarification to encompass the entire length of the east, west, and south end of the property. Or if that fencing is limited to the area that is gravelled. And obviously, we're already operating outside of that gravelled area. It's already, there's already encroachment, right, into the other areas of the yard. So, that would be a request to have further, further definition on that.
I just want to make sure, whoops. So, just as clarification, in the text, it says rear and side yard. So, no, it would not be here. That would be interfering with that easement. And that's what it's talking about, where it says shall not be in this 30-foot. But it would be from here, 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 and here, on all three sides. Up to, no, now, the last 25 feet in the front, the fence would not be at six foot. We can't, we can't have six-foot fences in the front yards. But, um, but it would be from there all the way, or at least from here, you know, base- I, it just dawned on me, they could, as an option, start it here and run it. But basically, covering that entire storage area so it's not viewable from the public or adjoining properties.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I would like to, if that could be part of your suggested condition of approval to the commission, I would appreciate that, because it is really not fair. I would also like to, what I did not see in your suggested conditions of approval is the timeframe in which the applicant has to apply. Is this, you know, the, is the, is the use permit only then approved when the conditions are all met? Or is that a kind of, we are, yes, we're going to do this when we get along, again, when we get around? Because it's not a lack of fencing materials, why there's no fence here, right? I mean, we're having a fencing business there. So, I would just like to know, you know, what is the timeframe of compliance?
So, they have to have, they have to meet the conditions before they can operate. They have to have the buildings inspected and things like that. It's, it's, it's not a legal operation without the permit, and it's not, um, because they, you know, like, for example, the shed, we don't know if, does it meet? That's why they're required to get it inspected by the building inspector before they start fabricating in there. The fencing needs to go, or the wall or what, all of that. The operation, at a minimum, that fencing would need to go up. And then, you know, so the fence would go up, I could see, and then you could store the materials, because then it wouldn't be, you know, folks wouldn't have to see it. And then do the fabrication maybe later. I mean, those things are flexible. But the orders of operation, the fence would need to go up, um, you know, if they get the approval, it would be before they would be able to start doing their businesses.
And I think our position is that they're already doing the business, right? We're not here because this was thought out. This was a, hey, I'm considering buying a property. I would like to have this type of business operating out of my home. I can be home with my children, you know, off all as well. It wasn't brought with the idea that I'm doing it the right way. I'm here and talking to you, applying for this permit before I start operating. I mean, you look at Google Maps, it says on Google Maps that there is a business here. And so, to kind of, you know, we are already, it's, I feel like we're already operating, the, the cat is already out of the bag. And how do you pull it back in and saying that, yeah, you know, you don't get a permit unless you do all these things in which timeframe? And what are the consequences of not following through? The same as we have, you know, the last three years? You know, it's, there hasn't been really any-
Well, it was not brought to our attention until recently. We then moved on it. We're following the code compliance requirements associated with that. Continued activity, though, is not permitted at this time. And if there's continued activity going on until we get the permit, then that moves back into code enforcement and other, I was, so-
So, that, that continued, there would be another thing to contact you then about?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The continued operation?
We have to file a complaint?
We have to file a complaint?
So, the, the operation just continued? It never stopped?
No.
No?
No.
My other, one other point I want to make is the precedence that something like this sets, you know, so you make, you have a conditional use permit for this type of operation. You feel like, you know, you know, it's the Clark's addition, it's not a super nice place to live at. And then somebody else comes to you. I mean, you're setting, you're setting the path for others to follow. And so, where do you, where, where do things stop? Where do you say that, okay, this is approved, and the other, somebody else is denied? You know, what is, what is the, what is the line? And, you know, just kind of keeping that in mind as you're making your recommendation, that you are setting the precedence for others to follow. So, needless to say, I'm not in favor of this operation. I, I, I would like to have better relation, you know, I'd like to have good relationships with my neighbors, and I would like to get along. But I also would like to maintain, have a nice property for me that we enjoy and without any noise and, yeah, piles of stuff to look at when I have two marriages in the morning. So, thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
So, I wanted to, the petition that we had signed-
Go ahead and go up to the mic.
The petition that we had signed is in your packet. It is now 25 people who are against it and doesn't want a business started there. I know the ladies that say that they live there in a home, I hardly ever see any kids, or any kids playing outside and stuff like that. I do see cars coming in the morning and cars leaving in the afternoon. But I'm not calling her a liar or anything like that. I just don't see anyone living there. And I'm one of the neighbors. And she was correct, I did Google the address on Google Maps, and it says United Fencing Companies in Tri-Cities. So, that's all I have.
I want, uh, just wanted to, I want, I'm sorry. The cupboard again, six, seven, one, three, North Road 42. Wanted to, uh, just clarify the, you know, the fact that they were, they've been going since, they never stopped operating their business. In my, in my letter that I wrote, it says actually on excessive noise. The day I began writing this objection letter, my wife and I didn't have to be up early since I'm retired. Neither did I, but about 6:00 AM, we were woken by large diesel motors moving around their thing. So, and even there are, even though, not only did they not stop, they're not operating within the suggested parameters of nine to four. They're starting, you know, early in the morning, which I get, you know, it's hot. It's, I mean, if I ran a business, especially like an outside business, I was FedEx for years, and I was meter reader for years. And so, I totally get, you know, get in, get out there early, get off, you know, get off the road early and try not to overheat. But, you know, it's, it just can't be on our backs. And I, and I, and I understand, like I said again, I, I have a lot of empathy for, for what, what they went through. It's just, I, like my wife said, I wish they would have done it the right way. And checked on the neighborhood and said, you know, hey, well, I can't just set up a business here, buy this place and set up a business, because that's what they ended up doing. And they have not stopped, so, thanks.
Is that all the comments?
One more, you know, there's a lot of people, we, we went all over there to talk to people, and a lot of people didn't even get a notice that this was happening in their backyard. A lot of people. And that should have never happened. And this land use permit sign, I only seen it one time standing, that was up in this, was in this paper. One of our people that signed this against this business, she went and set it up against some weeds. And that's as far as, so, and so people didn't even see that sign. You know, what I'm telling you, I go by there every day, I live there. And like they said, nobody is using that house as a family house. You know why? I'm just telling you what my eyes see, and I'm telling you what my ears see. And I'm not, and that's just where it is. So, just don't let this come in our neighborhood. One of these days, you're gonna be coming here and asking, well, we want you to city limit. Well, you done that, pushed some other people's a little bit further than you should have. Now they got a donut hole in Pasco. We don't want another donut hole I don't think you guys want. But remember, you, we're just humans, just like you are, you know? We got our wants, and we fix up our place just like you. Hopefully someday if we sell it, we get a good price out of it. We don't want a bunch of junk in our front yard. You go in Hubbard's yard, them kind of picking vehicles been sitting there for months, leaking oil and everything else that was on them gas is right against their fence. Now, just, while you're seeing these pictures, you guys have them. Just imagine that was in front of your guys' yard, what you would think. And you'd be thinking, you'd be up here talking to somebody, you know, instead of me up here. Because you guys wouldn't want in your front yard or anywhere else around there, you know? And a six-foot fence, oh, you guys would really love that in your neighborhood. You couldn't even see the kind, picking stop sign when you come around and you have got so many fences. But they, we're out bought out there as fences, you know? If we wanted fences, we would have lived in town with you guys. But anywhere we're at, we're out there where we enjoy the outside. We don't want nobody old fence in our yard or anywhere else out there. But I pray that you guys consider what we're saying, because you wouldn't like it either. And thank you.
Okay, I think everybody's been up here. No neutral testimony, I take it? No. Any email testimony? No. Does staff have any final comments? Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience?
Yeah, I need a quick clarification. I believe it was Mrs., Mrs. Hubbard. One of the statements you made, and I, I'm asking for this because I misunderstood that. When speaking to staff, you were talking about the, um, business continued operating, but I misunderstood your question whether code enforcement should be notified in conjunction to the proceedings of the business? Or should code enforcement be notified now because of the continuous of the business? That was when you took that note on whether it continued or not. So, I was, I was a little confused on that.
So, my, my comment was, you know, if they're related to the timeframe under which these conditions have to be met in order to, to operate, continue to operate. And I was not aware that during this time, when there is a complaint filed and you file for a conditional use permit, that you are ordered to cease operation. And, you know, and, and so, so that was a, you know, that, that was new to me, and I just wanted to let you know that, so I wanted to find out, well, how, who do I contact? Then, when operations continues to happen? And so, okay, so we'll call Derek. Okay.
That would be me.
That was, that was my only, you know, I didn't realize that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Is that it for clarification? Okay, the public testimony portion of public hearing for CUP 2020-6, SEPA 2022-20 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst planning commissioners?
So, I have a question, Derek. If they, if, when code enforcement goes out there, they have a certain amount of time to apply for a get additional use permit and try to rectify the code interaction, correct?
Right. Or, or just stop doing it.
But they have to cease operation?
Yeah.
So, if, if, if they haven't ceased operation, should we even be talking about this right now?
Well, it kind of-
Because it's, it's back into code enforcement. They broke, I mean, I don't know if we can ask, have you guys been cooperating since, since the code enforcement?
We stopped all fabrication at that shop.
I'm not talking about fabrication, I'm talking about conducting business.
What we did is we were moving all the material out. We've stayed some because there's no room to put it anywhere else. But we have moved, we see on there, there's, through the pictures, the material's less, so we've been moving it out of there. I did ask that question, if we do get all that out of there, which, all the noise they heard, dump traders, everything we've been throwing out. And I cleaned up as much as I could back there without, you know, I have nowhere else to put it at. So, I did ask them, if I do that, will I get deemed or will I get in trouble? They said, as long as you're actively trying to fix that and correct that, then it looks like-
Do you, do you have employees coming to and from your business every day?
They were helping us move all the material, yes. No, we don't have more employees.
And that, that was my understanding of what that activity-
Yeah, we have no more employees right now. Once that was done, they're done.
Go ahead. Well, can we even take public questions?
Public testimony, we've got, there are claims that the operations continued. The applicant is also stating that those operations were in order to bring the site into compliance with the request of code enforcement. We're not gonna answer that question.
And we gradually have.
I mean, I've talked to a few, we can still remove some of that stuff, but again, again, it's gonna be misinterpreted as working. So, we can keep removing it if we're allowed to, to get it all out until we meet all the, all the conditions.
Hey, Derek, you guys closed the public hearing, so none of this is coming in for the record?
This, this is more clarification for us, so, I mean, my-
Well, there was, there was a statement made during the record that operations were continuing. They were seeking clarification regarding what those operations were that were made during the record, and the applicant didn't have an opportunity to answer or respond to any during the hearing, so-
Do you want to reopen it to allow them, I mean, because one thing is none of the-
I see what you're saying.
-board of commissioners to be outside the record? Because they won't-
Can we, do we have to say everything again to the record? Or can we just say that the record's been reopened?
Just, just reopen it.
Okay, so-
But to allow for the, the minimal, or the, you know, the clarification only.
Do you understand what she was saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, we need to reopen the hearing?
It's done. It's reopened. We just put that into testimony, and if we're done, I'm gonna close it again.
We're done.
Okay, we're done. Mindy?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering if, if there was, if there's no further clarification needed from members of the public before you close it?
Good question, because I think there is.
Okay.
I just, go ahead.
And we can't keep coming up, so we gotta, let's get to the point and-
I just wanted to let you know, so the, the day I wrote that, I'm trying to find, uh, I'm not as good on my email and my cellphone as, as everything else. But as of even last week, there were, I don't know how many cars parked in the driveway from the, the people that come and go, and they've been coming in at 6:00 in the morning. And this was as of last week, still coming in, loading stuff, moving stuff around. And, you know, yeah, if he's saying, it's like, where are they moving it to? They're just going to a job and working, right? That's kind of doing business as usual. So, yeah, they didn't work over the weekend. I didn't, I don't think most of us did, because it was a holiday weekend. But the, but they worked all the way up till last Thursday or Friday, so, anyway, that's my clarification.
Okay. Go ahead. Take the microphone.
Belen Lopez, 4120 Melody Lane. La, this past week, I, you know, I'm a teacher, so we had trainings, you know, me, the teacher connecting with the family and whatnot. And my husband was not even like working at all last week. So, as of last week, I know for a fact, nothing, period, was happening at the house. So, and as for Labor Day weekend, you know, family time and whatnot, but as of last week, I know- as of last week, I know for a fact, because I just started trainings and whatnot. So I just wanna state that. You know, we have a one-year-old, a four-year-old, and we have a you know, I had to take my junior to her first day of school. My husband had to be with the children. You know, so I mean, it, we, you know, there's a balance, you know, between him and I when it comes to, you know, our business and trying to make things work, but as of last week that had just passed, there was nothing or phone calls period going on. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I think that's, I think we're done. I think we're done.
You shut me up?
Yep.
Shame on you.
I know, I know. Maybe you could just keep going back and forth all night. So, okay. So any more clarification for, are we, are we gonna shut public testimony down? Okay, public testimony's done. Now we're gonna have, can we still ask them questions if we want? Or is that public testimony?
Well.
There's a difference between testimony and clarification.
Questions, so we can ask them questions?
As long as it's questions that relate to things they brought up.
Okay, so public testimony's closed. Now we're doing clarification for board. Go ahead.
Well, I want a clarification as far as every business has to have a business license. So I wanna know all about the business license for this fence company. Because if folks, I've been in business, I've in the construction general contract for almost 50 years. We've had, we have a, I live out north of Clark Edition. And we have a in-home office license for our business. And I could never conduct my business there where I live. We had a place in town, had a storage shop, cattle shop, all that. Uh, 25 to 30 employees. I just wanna know, I wanna define this, the business license part of this thing. And if all these conditions are met.
But part of the deal is, is part of the conditions are, is is they have to follow, they have to get their shop inspected, they have to do all these things. We are here to talk about land use, not their business license. Am I correct?
Well, that, but the business license.
That's correct. Any business in Franklin County is required to have a business license.
Right.
That's operating in unincorporated Franklin County must have business license. If they're not, that's up to my licensing division to deal with. It's not the purview really of the planning department or, or the planning commission. This is a question of whether or not if it is approved, then they will be required to comply with all the business regulations that they would have to for any business. If it's not, then it becomes moot. And if they're op, continue to operate their business without a permit, then, then the other things start happening. The enforcement stuff.
The business license also takes traffic back and forth and how that business conducts itself, even with, if all the conditions are, are managed upgrades to, to comply for the CUP. I'm just saying that not only do you have employees, you set it all up. And that fence company can run like Rick's Fence Company on, on Clearwalk. Or Frontier Fence or what have you. It's fence company. And, and I get it, you have, you have not only have employees coming in and out, but you can have customers coming in, driving in, checking out, well, what kind of fence do you want? There, there's a lot to it. And as far as that transportation, trucks in and out, there's a lot to that. When you're running inventory, especially when you're doing fencing. Because there's a big turnover in materials.
But fencing is one of the things in the conditional use permit for, for rural residential one. A fencing company is specifically stated as an appropriate function.
Contractor storage is what contractor, contractor open storage.
Okay, so there's a difference between contractor storage and having employees come and go and everything else, correct?
That's a good question.
There, there can be, I mean, it, we're starting.
I have a question because it's related to that as well. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead, Mindy, did you have?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Um, thanks for your patience. I, I just, um, with the application description and, um, it just seems that it is with the gate fabrication that will occur within the existing shop building. It just seems more of an industrial-related use in a residential area than an actual contractor lay-down yard to me. Um, so I just had a question on, um, you know, with, with, um, the, the way that of course, the code enforcement process works. Um, is that going to be a challenge for Franklin County to be able to um, make sure that everything, if, if we approve it, that all the conditions are, are complied with? Who's going to police that? So, you know, quote unquote, not saying that, you know, the police department, but who's going to, um, actually monitor that? And that's kind of just my question on it. Thank you.
Okay.
My understanding that's more of a reactive type situation where somebody calls in.
It's complaint, enforcement is complaint driven.
I mean, the planning department is not the, you know, the, the cops. I mean, they get a phone call, this thing is not in compliance, they have to go out there and check it out and it's, uh, complaint-driven, totally.
So that could go on forever?
Yeah.
So how did we get from a storage yard to running a business out of there?
Well, we went.
This is, this is kind of where the conversation went. I've, I've told you what, what I've, I've, uh, the fabrication is secondary ancillary and it's only to occur in the shop or in that building. Providing that building meets all the requirements under the building code for a commercial structure. If that doesn't happen, then, see, they have to meet all the requirements to legally operate there. So that's staff recommendation and is based on them meeting all those. I'm not here to question whether they can or they can't, whether they have the fiscal ability to do so or not. That's not my purview. I don't count their employees, I don't do any of that stuff. I don't question how they run or operate their business as long as what they're doing is within the confines of the code. That's what our job is. Any business, anywhere, could be a code violation. And I have to go and deal with that as a code violation. That's a separate matter. What we're talking about here is the conditional use permit and whether or not it's appropriate for commercial storage and fence fabrication facility to be located in the RR1 zone, specifically Clark's Edition. Now, questions regarding continued operations and things like that, you know, there's a debate that can be held. And I'm not, again, I'm not down there watching them 24/7 to determine whether or not. Well, I don't know, that looks like this type of use. Well, that looks like fam, you know, that's, again, way outside the scope of any government's purview, watching somebody's property. You know, any business could abide by the rules or violate the rules. I can't control that. All I can do is respond to it when it's brought to our attention. So we were notified, the code enforcement. If they are out there going willy-nilly and ignoring all the rules and regulations and stuff, eventually what would happen is this facility would be turned over to the prosecuting attorney's office for fines and potential criminal charges, depending on how heinous or weird the violation is. But the, the, just like any other business. The one thing I do realize that we didn't, we did, but again, this is with us being, knowing what it means. They had to apply for a home occupation and they had to abide by all the regulations associated with a home occupation. Well, that does things like limits the number of cars you can have in a day. This, that, you know, there's various requirements that if you violate those, then you're not operating. You know, your, your advertising has to be minimal. Sometimes it's not even allowed to have exterior. Certain uses aren't allowed, so that's where we thought we covered that, but it, we probably, if this were to move forward with a recommendation and conditions, we would, um, need to clarify that, you know, limited numbers because the concern about, you know, somebody's fence company, you said it could be like blah, blah, blahs and people are just coming in and going, no, that's, it'd be a home profession. And again, violations of those regulations can cause, be caused for the county to revoke the permit and to revoke the business license. If you're violating the rules, we don't just sit there and ignore you if we're aware of it. If you're violating the rules, we're going to enforce the action. Unfortunately, it doesn't mean that we can just snap our fingers and things stop. Everybody has a right to due process. The accused just as much as the accuser. You know, both of those must be balanced. And, um, and that's what we work to do. But if they're approved to move forward, they will be required to get all and do everything that any other business would have to do. If they are denied, they would, you know, have to stop doing what they're doing. You know, and, and look for other options or just give up on that. That's, but that's really, again, that's the applicant's call. It's not my call. I look, we look at the rules. Storage yard is the primary, but they're doing some additional stuff, so it's not just a storage yard, which is why we brought that up. And the fabrication. And then you need to look at, you know, so you need to look at what the proposed activities are. What the proposed conditions are, if you think there's additional conditions or whatnot. And, and do that. But we do need to remember that this is a conditional use permit. And it's not about their business license. That would be taken care of later, um, if it's not already. And because they're not supposed to be doing any business, so why would they have a business license for a facility they're not doing business out of? If they were doing business out of it and they have a business license, then that business license would still be valid. But they can't do the activity because of the land use conflict. So once they bring the land into compliance with the standard, then that license would be valid again. I mean, but that's, again, that's not the planning commission. That's, that's my administrative office who handles business licenses. That's their job.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is there's the, there's the contractor storage, which is the land use that we're dealing with here. As far as operating the business and what they do business-wise and employees-wise out there is a completely separate issue.
That would be correct, yeah.
So we could, we could hypothetically, if we approve the land use, they can still get stopped in the business side of it as far as the inspections of the shop and everything else like that. It's not a guarantee that if we approve the land use, that they're gonna operate their business from out of there, correct?
Well, I just wanna say that, that's, that's kind of my point that I was trying to get to, you know, roundabout, where is it? They could jump through all these hoops as far as the land use and still not get a business license for what they wanna do on that piece of land.
Right, and I guess, and I guess the reason I'm asking it is for your guys' benefit and for ours, is is we are dealing with a land use issue. The contractor storage yard is approved for rural residential. As far as operating the business out of it, that's a separate thing. They gotta meet all the, the code and rules, the business license requirements, everything else like that, and that is not within our purview.
The, the storage and the fabrication building.
Right.
Yeah.
But the fabrication building is gonna get inspected for fire control and the whole damn, the whole ball of wax, right? So again, we don't have a say over that part.
And it has to be within the existing footprint of the existing building, because that's what they proposed in the application.
Good.
I think that's where my confusion was at too, with your question and your remarks on it, because I know in the entire UGA area, there's many businesses that operate at, out of their own home, whether it's contracting, whatever the case may be, um, but they still have to follow that licensing scenario and those regulations followed and required by the city, not by Franklin County itself.
Well, okay, couple, just as clarification, Clark's Edition is not in the UGA. It's outside of the UGA. It's in what's known as a lammert. But, just as clarification, but everything else is correct. Within the UGA and lammerts, various zones, there's even probably a few in Clark's Edition that have licenses. It's a matter of the business type and various other scenarios. In fact, home professions are permitted in any zone where residential is permitted. It's just that not all uses can be a home profession. But it is not uncommon for contractor storage yards to be a home business. For a contractor to work out of his home and store materials and vehicles on the property.
As long as they comply with the code, their, their facilities meet the building codes and.
Outdoor storage is to be obscured from sight.
Here's an example. You could have an excavator that had all kinds of equipment around his house. Now he would be out of compliance. You couldn't license that because it'd be such an eyesore that it wouldn't, the county wouldn't, wouldn't go for it. You could still have an office with, with that business there out of your house. It might just say, there's many, many, many businesses that work out of homes. But it's when you go to the line, you start stacking stuff up and it starts looking like a lumberyard that it becomes something different.
That's, that's what triggers the conditional use permit for open storage of materials. Enclosed storage of materials is pretty much permitted by right.
It's not governed by our body. We're talking about land, so.
We're talking about land use.
No, that's what I'm saying. So if they took everything, built the buildings and had the ability to build buildings large enough to accommodate, they could do that. But that does, they could store things in the building just like anybody else can store stuff in buildings. But they are limited to the, or no, they're not out there, are they? RR1 doesn't have the 1680 rule and. Okay, but anyways, they'd be limited by lot coverage. But there are limits, um, it's the outdoor storage of the materials and the operation of a business from that location that are kind of the two things. The licensing of the business is pointless if the conditional use permit is not granted. If the, so if they do have a license, then that won't be valid. Well, it would be because they could be operating some other way. But it won't be from that location. Like, for example, I think somebody in the audience mentioned the port. Let's say they relocated to the port and they have their business license. We would merely change the address on their business license and it would go with them where they go.
But are we correct in thinking that this is a to lack very term, a two-step, yeah? If we don't approve the land use, then the business license, that address doesn't matter. But, but if, if we approve it, it's still another step for them to get their business license approved for that area, correct? And they have to meet all the code, all the enforcements and everything else like that.
They have to meet the requirement.
Approval for recommendation, correct?
You have no approval power. We only approve recommend, we only recommend approvals or denial or modify the recommenda, so you either take my recommendation and move with it. Deny my recommendation. Or amend the recommendation and we move that forward. Those are your three options.
And I just wanted to make clear that.
Or postpone it and we.
Audience to make more action, making the approval ourselves. We are making that recommendation.
You just make a recommendation.
What was that again?
I just wanted to make that clarification, the, the context of that word, because I don't want the audience thinking we're actually making the approval.
Well, yeah, we're making our, a most of approval to the board of commissioners, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, are we done discussing?
Do you have any questions?
I have a lot of questions. Okay. We're done with discussion. I will entertain a motion. You wanna put the motion up there?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Didier. I move to, forward to the Board of Commissioners a denial. I move to, forward to the Board of Commissioners, a denial of CUP 2022-06.
Remember about denials?
What about denials? I thought that was one of our.
Oh, excuse me, a negative recommendation. Is that, is that better?
So what we do is we move, and remember, when you make a motion, it doesn't mean you necessarily support it. So you want your motions to be, so in case we get a tie, we don't end up with that weird denial approval weird thing. So it's, it's submitted, so what'll happen is it's submitted as an approval.
Right.
If you support that, you would vote yes. If you don't support that, you vote no or silent.
Okay.
And then, so that's, that's how that works.
Would you like to restate the motion, Commissioner Didier?
Uh, yes, I would. Um, I move to forward to the Board of Commissioners, a positive recommendation of CUP 2022-06. Um, oh, I don't know how to finish it because I don't agree with the eight suggested conditions of approval.
Vote on it. Is that correct, Derek?
Yeah.
And, and that's fine if you don't agree, we just need you to make a motion that says you're going to support it with those conditions and then you vote on it. And if that motion doesn't pass, then we're going to let the board know that it didn't pass.
Yes.
Yeah, we got it.
Because you're, you're making a motion, so you're supporting it.
Got it, okay. Um, with six findings of fact and eight suggested conditions of approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
You're welcome.
It has been moved by Commissioner Didier and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP 2022-6, SEPA 2022-20, with the six adopted findings of fact and eight conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Kraus. Mike Kraus, you have a roll call vote?
Yes, I do.
He's saying no, I'm guessing?
Not yet.
Or are you abstaining? I mean, what?
I wish I wasn't first.
Oh.
Melinda Didier?
No.
Mike Vincent?
No.
Laiden Low?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the, why I said it needed to be a positive, if you vote, if you move to deny something, it sets up a situation where, so all motions are supposed to be in the affirmative. So you make a motion and then they either decide yes or no.
What did you guys just tell us?
It, the recommendation forward to is to move it forward with a recommendation of approval.
I really think this should have been redone. They do mess with us. They think this is going to be a storage, not fabrication. It's going to be sent an email to you guys.
This, this, this part of the hearing has been voted on, we're, it's, we're done.
I know.
Okay, item number two is a public hearing for file ZC 2022-03, SEPA 2022-17. It is a proposal to rezone one parcel comprising approximately 2.89 acres from the current designation of agricultural production 20 to rural service commercial. The land has comprehensive plan use designation of rural settlement. I declare the public hearing for CZ 2022-03, SEPA 2022-17 to be open at 8:31. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to read the first slide because you pretty much just read that. But yeah, this is a zone change request. Parcel is 121262124. The address is 6851 Road 170, Mesa, Washington. Property is generally south of the corner, it's southwest of the corner of Road 170 and Short Road, east of Bailey Boulevard and north of Sheffield Road. Um, it's approximately 2.89 acres. Comp plan is rural settlement, agricultural production 20, to change the current zoning designation from AP 20 to rural service commercial. C2 is what we call it. Here's the, uh, apparently I turned the thingy off. There it is, it's right here, it's this corner property. This is C2, that's AP 20 and that's AP 20, and this is C2 or industrial, I can't remember off the top of my head.
And what is that one right now? What's that parcel?
This one?
Yeah.
AP 20. So they're looking to go from AP 20 to C2, this is C2. This is C2. That's C2 or industrial, I just, I think it's.
Industrial.
Oh, it's on the next slide? Well, no, it's not, not what I was pointing at. But based on that, if I recall correctly, that continues down along I1, or, um, right there in that cluster. But it might, it's, no, it's, it, no, it is C2. So it's C2 over here. So there's this crop circle, that was a crop circle, um, that you saw in the picture. And then that's the property. Pictures of the site. Honor about July 28, 2022, staff sent notices to technical agencies, property owners within 500 feet, Franklin County Graphic, and entered the SEPA determination into the SEPA registry as 202, 203, 726. Posted a pending land use action sign on the property on August 15th. Received comments from the following agencies during the comment period, Franklin Public Works, County Public Works. No public comments were received for this proposal. The land use map guides development of lands. Um, comp plan designation is rural settlement, it's a lammard. The property is within a lammard, the Basin City lammard. As mentioned, it's AP 20 with surrounded lands, Zone C2 to the north and AP 20 to the south and west. Um, bounded by R170 to the north. Minimum lot size is 20 acres in the AP 20. So technically, this is a, well, it doesn't meet, as it's currently zoned, it's not the minimum lot size, however, through innovative or earlier land use actions, it, it's probably, I don't, I don't have any understanding that it's a non-conforming lot as far as, except for it doesn't meet the minimum 20 acres. But proposed, proposed rezone is consistent with the comp plan and a designation of rural settlement. Lammards, I'm sorry, local areas, more intense rural development, that's a lammard. So Clark's addition is a lammard. Basin City is a lammard. Eltopia is a lammard. Colodus, City of Pasco and Canal, Conell and Mesa are cities. Lammards are, and Basin City specifically is envisioned to provide, it's a service area, service center, so it's supposed to be providing ag-related services as well as, you know, resources for like farmers, you know, like, so grocery stores, gas stations, repair facilities, these types of things. So it's kind of like a city, but not really. It's higher density residential usually, things like that. It's what they call a service center, a rural service center. So the concept is that, and Eltopia is the same way, and so it's Merrill's Corner, I think it's called, the one directly to the south, yeah. I get that one mixed up with the other one that's over to the southwest from there. Four corners or something. But anyways, so, under a lammard, whereas say in the AP 20 rural lands or in anywhere else in unincorporated Franklin County, when you go from a residential to a commercial or residential to a, or ag to industrial, these types of things, the comp plan designation needs to be the same. So you can change density, AP 20 to AP 40. That's just, you know, changing your density, but they're still both agricultural uses. If you go from agricultural to commercial or ag to industrial or whatever, and you change that underlying comp plan designation, you have to go through a comp plan change. Lammards are different because lammards are already defined as an area with this rural, rural settlement designation. And what that means is anything within the defined boundaries of the lammard can be changed with what we call a simple rezone. You don't have to go through a comp plan change to change what's going on because all these different types of uses are envisioned within that, but they're not specifically laid out as to necessarily where. So hence, we've got an application that's going from AP 20 and ag use to a commercial use. In a lammard, you don't have to go through that comp plan because commercial activities are one of the listed uses or intended uses in the C2 zone, or I mean, in the lammard, the rural settlement zone. So, and we're not doing, another thing that we have to look out for now, so we're looking at this and planning has to look and go, hey, is this spot zoning? In other words, you're dropping, um, an unusual zoning that makes no sense in its location or something like that, like, um, I don't know. Somebody wants to get, um, build a factory in the middle of a residential area, so they go for, you know, you got a, a single lot of industrial land surrounded, that's called spot zoning, it's illegal, you can't do that. But that's not the case here. Um, you know, we've got commercial across the street, we've got it a lot or a piece of a lot over, a few hundred feet over, we've even got more intense residential uses in proximity.
Well, that's the main drag through Basin City, isn't it?
And, and, yeah, I was going to say, and it's along what we call a collector. That's a collector arterial, I think. I mean, that's, that's where a lot of roads feed into, it's a main drag. So, you know, makes sense under the scheme of a lammard and the surrounding use, that's why staff's, um, making the recommendation or leaning where it's leaning.
So Derek, in a lammard, basically what you're saying is you can have a collection of different things going on as far as, in that same zoning.
Certain lammards. For example, Basin City and Eltopia are some of our most intense. Um, that rural settlement, whereas rural residential, Clark's addition, is more residential oriented. Without the mix of some of the more intense uses, like for examples, um, like, well, I don't know, gas stations or, you know, these grocery stores, things like that just wouldn't be really appropriate in Clark's addition. And it's zoned that way.
But you're coming up Basin City brings true because there's everything right there.
Basin City is rural settlement.
You got a gas station.
See, it's rural settlement.
Right.
And then, and then the shoreline, you know, we always get the RC1 applications for, see, that's shoreline development. So it's specifically been designated, that's why, again, we don't go through a comp plan change when somebody switches from AP 20, which is ag, to RC1, which is residential. The reason we don't require that there is because it's the shoreline development area, the underlying, so yeah, those are the three big ones, four, I'll go through the four. You got rural community, rural settlement, shoreline development, and rural residential. So we only have two rural residential ones, and that's Cal Trail and Clark's addition. Then we've got a few or.
RS1?
It's RC.
RC.
RR1, RR.
RR1, right.
Or RR, so when you see RR1 or RR5, that's rural residential. It's primary focus is hobby farms and then some other, some limited conditional uses is provided in the code. And then, um, you know, hobby farms, large lot residential, these types of things. Rural settlement, Eltopia, Merrill's Corner, Basin City, I'm pretty sure there's a couple other ones scattered around out there. Those are supposed to be developed to provide services. And also maybe housing and things like that, so people don't have to drive into Pasco for everything, but not necessarily a hospital. You know, um, you know, those types of things. And then shoreline development is special designator, recognizing the value of the land for residential development along the shorelines as opposed to commercial or industrial uses, plus there's ecological reasons and various other things, you want to keep that away. And then, I le, I forgot the last one I didn't explain. Oh, rural community. Rural community is RC. So that's, again, primary fa, focus on residential, but it does have a little bit more, I think it's less, rural community, you can do less things than you can in a rural residential. I could have that backwards, but there's an intensity of use allowances in those zones that are kind of different. So they're different flavors, but the, the lammard rules still apply. If, if you're meeting the requirements or the comprehensive plan designation or explanation of what that lammard's supposed to be, then you don't have to go through a comp plan, but you may change zones around. So that's why you're seeing this somewhat what we'd see normally as a whole lot more steps just being requested as a straight zone change, or what we call a simple zone change. So that's kind of the background on that. We used to call them back in the day towns, but apparently we don't. The state got rid of towns, so then they realized we needed something, so they created So as I, so here, we are going to see, there's in some ways more and less. So in AP 20, you got, you can have industrial farming, that can be pretty intensive, but in the C2, you can have, you know, retail establishments, malls, okay, you're not going to generally get a mall out there, but, you know, like strip mall, maybe a multi-unit open mall, um, grocery stores, businesses, those types of things, gas stations. It's kind of like a town, but it's under the jurisdictional authority of the county. They even have a, up there, a pretty significant water sewer system, so. So, and then AP 20 is ag land. as it states there, provides for their location of small retail and retail wholesale businesses and commercial services in rural areas for the convenience of county residents. So like, you know. So like, you know, an Amazon distribution center, not appropriate in a lammard. Because it will create land use or traffic conflicts, potentially. I mean, you would have to do a whole lot of improvements to the road system and everything else. So it could be theoretically possible, but it's not really the intention. However, a large ag production facility, maybe, more appropriate because again, it's rural centered. So, you know, whereas Amazon is more industrial or business centered than, than rural or urban centered, I should say. And then you see here, you know, it put it in a few areas. Activities, rural activity center, rural settlement or agricultural service center. I keep doing that because my neck's pinched, so I keep twitching. And then here, it's going through the stuff I've basically already articulated. The logical, in ours is generally a box or a rectangular shape around a developed area. So there's land for these lammards to grow into. And one could say that this is a request to extend that a little bit because everything south of there is AP 20. The boundary runs quite a bit of a ways down. So I mean, there's still more land. So there's no need for us to expand our lammards. And that's another thing, lammards are about, they pretty much take an act of God to change that LOB, the Logical Outer Boundary. But it's not necessarily the shape of what you see developed. It's an actual box that extends beyond that area in all of the lammards, almost all of them at least. Findings of fact criteria, render a recommendation to approve, approve modifications under condition to reject petition. You'll make an enter of finding a fact from the record and conclusions thereof that basically support your recommendation is in accordance with the goals and policies of the comp plan, affect the proposal on the immediate area. You don't want, these are, these are the things that you got to make sure it doesn't, well, some things it does, some things it doesn't do. If there's merit and value in the proposal, conditions should be imposed, whether or not there should be conditions imposed and, or whether or not a concomitant agreement would be, should be entered into. The application to rezone is in accordance with the goals, policies of the comprehensive plan, as already discussed. It's pretty consistent with the surrounding areas. I mean, there's, there's a couple AP 20, but the majority of this area is commercial. And there's manufactured home park to the west of it. One thing we do hear a lot of complaints about is, is the fact that you always got to run to town. And for some folks, that's a bit of a run. So we do believe there's merit and value. There will be conditions if, if, you know, anything goes to bill. They're limited to what they can do there based on the zone. But we don't believe a concomitant agreement would be required. And as usual, with a zone change, you know, future development at site shall comply with Development Regulations Title 16, 17, and 18, as well as the building code for anything they're building and any other state, local or federal standards. Somebody's got their phone on without mute because they just filled a glass of water.
Somebody's doing dishes.
Or something. Road and access, future development at the rezone site shall be evaluated for the following. Again, standard comments for a rezone, approach permit will be required at the time of development or for access onto the road. And any utility extension crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at the time of application. And that are recommended motion.
Does any commissioner have questions of staff? Is the applicant online or on phone? No. No testimony, testimony, is there email testimony? No. Does staff have any final comments? Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone? No audience. Public testimony portion of the public hearing for CZ 2022-03, SEPA 22, 2022-17 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to forward CZ 2022-02 to the Board of County Commissioners a positive recommendation with five findings of fact and three conditions of approval as provided for in the staff report.
I'll second.
Commissioner Knighton has moved and Commissioner Lowe has seconded that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CZ 2022-03, SEPA 2022-17 with five adopted findings of fact and three conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Kraus?
Yes.
Melinda Didier? Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Laiden Low?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Motion's approved. So none of this means anything. So we're adjourned at 8:54.